Well, in that case, we're gonna go ahead and get started. We're gonna field stand, start with our plays, and we'll ask Commissioner Patton if he'll do our invitation. I'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our holy Father in heaven, we approach thee this evening in a motable manner. As your blessings upon us as we enter into this meeting, be blessed, as you would bless us, with patience and with knowledge and with temperance, that we will conduct the affairs of the city as the best that we can and for the best of all citizens that are concerned. Please guard and direct us this night and all through our life, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Welcome everybody out tonight. Go ahead and get started. And the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes.
Make the motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion, second, any further discussion? There's a paper seen by the House. Post same. Motion passes. Next item is the bills.
Who'd pay all bills?
Motion, second, any further discussion? Was referred by the House. Post same. Motion passes. We have no old business under here tonight, so we'll go down to new business. First item is the 2019 police stats presentation.
Want to come back to that?
Now, we know who's outside now, anyway.
Now, give me time to look on this address.
Mike's getting out of it.
He gave it. Congratulations.
I'm probably winging this. I wasn't planning on doing this. It's the statistics for last year. He's on the phone with the hospital, I think. You can look through it, and I've thumbed through it myself, but I haven't actually looked at it. I think, yeah, the third page is the cases we've opened. I think there was 104 pages. Eight of those remain open, the rest of them were closed cases. It's broken down by unit member. And the next page, total accidents, that was 210. I think that's pretty well where we're at on average. I'll go back to the cases open. I think our cases opened last year with about the same, nothing from last year. Total accidents, I know, were real close to the same from 2018. Drug-related citations or DUIs and drug-related citations. Sorry, I'm trying to thumbed through this one thing. Looks like we had 124 warrants served in 2019. I'm not sure. I think it's listed what we served in 2018. I think it was pretty close to about 70. Drug-related citations, looks like we had 20. Controlled substances, peels, 31 meth citations, or, yes, citations, 27 possession of marijuana, 35 paraphernalia, and then trafficking in meth and marijuana, we had four cases.
I'm gonna verify energy. Ask something. The DUI up here that's listed under 2019 citations, is that alcohol-related DUI?
I think it's broke down, and we'll go back to it. I think it's broke down on the drug-related citations.
Or it just says DUI?
Above that.
Where it says 2019, right here.
Up in the long list.
Says 24 DUI citations is what it's got listed. See what I'm saying?
I guess altogether.
Well, you've got a whole lot more. Possession of controlled substance and all that.
Yeah, these are drug-related charges.
But I'm saying is the DUI, does that include the drug related where you catch it when you're intoxicated?
Yes, that's true. I think it's actually broke down. It's their Kevin.
I didn't find it. That's the reason I was looking for it.
I thought it was.
Because I was thinking 24 is about what our number usually is, isn't it? Right in there?
Yeah, I mean, we're right, pretty close to the average. I think we're a little higher on alcohol this year and a little under on drug DUIs.
In the past, in the drug DUI, about two-thirds of that?
Ah, yes.
That's what I was thinking. It's pretty close to the same. Yeah, it's got the alcohol intoxication in public.
I thought it was in here.
But I don't see it in your alcohol.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, here it is. It's in here somewhere. Yeah, alcohol-related 15, and then drug-related DUIs. So, total was 24. 2018 was 33. 16 alcohol, and three alcohol, or 14 drug, and then there was three alcohol and drugs.
So, it's pretty close to.
So, actually less on alcohol.
Yeah. And now, that number's gonna, I mean, just keep in mind that that number depends on your officers, who works for the department, and what they are. A lot of times, we may have an officer that focuses on DUIs. In 2018, it did, and it was a police thing. So, that number fluctuates some based on your officers.
Right.
But generally speaking, I think if you go back the last four to five years, that number's gonna be 15.
I think so.
I have a question on the accidents, the location of the accidents. You have 62 and 231. Is that 62 east and west? Or is it in one particular?
62, what it is is, by our math, North Main Street from 62 west to 62 east is considered 67. So, a bit, I'm looking at.
Because that's just a huge number, 80 accidents.
So, that includes Main Street between those two.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. So, not necessarily at the intersection of 62 and 231?
Nothing.
Gosh, I thought 80.
That includes basically.
I thought if we had 80 at that intersection, we had a big problem.
That could be around the grade school and all the way down there.
City limits, city limits, up low. Yes.
And the Wal-Mart's McDonald's, is that down, the 15?
I believe it is, but.
I thought that was a lot more than that last year.
I believe it is down. They're in the, we'll get the stats in the back of this.
First lap, the parking lots are about as dangerous as we ever around there.
Yeah, parking lots are.
No wonder.
Huge portion of ours.
The way people drive in parking lots, I understand why.
Well, they're backing into each other. People whipping in reverse.
I think he probably wanted to point out that our call volume was lower down this year, and we addressed that. We had a department meeting last week, and I think the issue we're all, we've all been guilty of, that we're not giving out on the radio every time we get out on a call, is to say, and we should be doing that. It's a little bit of a complacency thing, but I think those numbers are a little skewed. They're down, but they're not, I think it was 600? Because that counts if we get out to do a welfare check, or if a call comes through the office and we go to a residence. If we don't give it out on the radio, we don't pick up those statistics. And we've all been with the radio traffic when it's heavy and been guilty of giving out. But we addressed that and asked everybody to make sure that we're giving out on our calls. Any other questions? Sorry.
Well, that's good. Being put on the spot, I thought you did excellent. Did we have to accept this or something called like most of the acceptance?
No, not really. It's just informational.
Well, Paul, we're with the police. I would like to have these in the record. City received two letters of commendation, one for Tommy Phelps and one, Mike Allen, from the Assistant Commonwealth Attorney, Chris Compton, for their work on a case, a couple cases. And it was very complimentary to our officers. I'm sure that all of them get them. I'd like to have these included in that report for their commendations. It'd be part of the record, anyway.
Sure.
I'll give it to you later, Mary.
Mike, anything you want to add, real quick?
Tommy did great.
Thank you, John. I apologize, sir. And, oh, Tommy, Tommy went over those. Only thing I've got to add is, we did our interviews, talked with Paul about those. We had Joe somebody, Dylan Lynn, his last name is L.I.N.N. He's 22. Phase one is scheduled for the 21st, I mean, 27th of this month. And both agree. Before phase two, we'll have to tentatively offer him employment. That's just something they make us do. Not to say we gotta, we gotta pay him then. What I'd like to do is, after we have your phase two, two weeks before his academy date, go ahead and hire him two weeks, put him on payroll two weeks before. That way, he gives us time to get everything taken care of, make sure all his paperwork done and all that. Like to, as normally we've been doing, we've been starting about 12:50 when it ends academy. And we've been doing 13 when you get out 50 cent rate after 90 days. I like to build 13:50. I like to give them dollar earnings. And in the future, not now, but in the future, we may need to think about this 12:50 to send somebody to. I know we're sending them, I know we're parking them in a car, but anybody's got a family, it's hard for them to go for that.
When's the academy start?
We're not sure yet. We'll wait until you screw phase two and then get a date. Probably, I'm saying probably realistically, probably, I'm gonna say probably May. So, hopefully, we can get him in this year and get him, get him done before the end of the year. So, but that's, and he works for Wal-Mart, that's where he works.
He's Walmart security, isn't he?
Law for engine. He does same job, he does same job Cody did when Cody worked down there.
Did you only have one that was worth dating him with, or?
Well, we had, we had some more, two or three more that, a couple that was pretty good, but at this time, I don't think that we wanted to try to, I don't know if it's feasible to send two to the academy right now because of, you know, hiring. So, therefore, we just chose to send one right now. Hopefully, maybe the next fiscal year, we may be sending another. I know when we send one, it seems like it's economically to send two because they don't have to have another car and all that, but yet, you end up having to hire two. So, right now, we just chose to go with this one. So, I guess we need some kind of, something in form of motion or something.
Who are, Dylan?
Dylan Lynn.
Dylan Lynn, as a police officer.
Now, we'll comment. He's been coming to the Wellness Center working out ever since he found out he might be an applicant. He's been coming every day and working out, trying to get in shape so he can do this.
Okay. We'll need to make that contention upon page.
Just page one.
Okay, the motion is second, any further discussion? There was a paper seen by the House. Post same. Motion passes. Fire stats.
I won't go through the whole fire packet because it's kind of in-depth on a lot of things. I'll just kind of go through the statistics, but if y'all want to take it home and look them over, there's a lot of good stuff in there. Which will, some of this is going to be from June to January. But on the first packet there is co-divorcement. We had 59 cases worked on, and there's kind of a graph there that shows how many cases and violations we had. We didn't have to go past the violation stage on anything, which is kind of a nice thing. We was able to work with everybody, things cleaned up, taken care of. The next page, it kind of shows different types. The, we're listed debris. That's gonna be anything from trash, the trees, shrubbery, anything like that. And then, of course, like it says, we have 57 cases open, or closed at the end of the year and still have two cases open. On the fire department, if you go across the back, I think it's three pages in. There are four in. It'll not, it'll look like that.
Four in?
Yeah.
I like this.
I figured I'd put faces on the picture. There's a lot of good stuff in there. Y'all want to look through it later.
Which one's at the top? Accident or medical? Or the four?
Back towards the front.
Right there.
Kind of comparison between 18 and 19. 2018, we had 321 total runs. 2019, we had 419. So, almost 100 runs, more than what we had last year. Of course, medical is our most runs is 192 this year compared to 122 last year. Fire calls can be anything from structure fires, car fires, brush fires, utility poles, garbage fires, things like that. And there was 105 this year compared, or 2019 compared to 91 in 2018. Vehicle accidents are pretty close to the same. It's 88 2019 and 86 in 2018. The other category is gonna be gas leaks, utility lines, tree downs, things of that nature. And there's 34 2019 to 22 in 2018. The next few graphs just kind of break down the types of runs. For instance, like on fire response in the next one, kind of give you percentage and shows, you know, our, our most called out fire response is gonna be structural fire. We had 30 of them last year. And that is gonna be a reflection of mutual aid with other departments. Vehicle fires, we had 21, 15 brush fires, 18 false alarms, and the, like I said, the other could be utility poles or garbage fires, stuff like that. The next one, it breaks down the vehicle accidents. 55 runs that we ran last year on vehicle accidents were with injury, 35 was without. And then, there's a graph that kind of breaks down the others, the hazmats, road hazards, utilities. And then, on the back one, it's kind of a breakdown of inside the city limits and outside the city limits. The fire calls is high on the outside, but like I said, that mutual aid falls into that category as well. Inside the city limits, you can see we had 21 fire calls. And some of those are gonna be, they smell smoke in their home, we go to the home and there's nothing there, but they are still considered a fire call. Outside, there's 46. And this, like I said, this is from June to December. There was 21 vehicle accidents inside and 31 out. Medical calls are 73 inside the city limits and 34 out. I don't know if y'all can kind of see that last graph right there, which some of that's still in progress, so let's hit them up.
Great job, appreciate it. Approve the resolution FY 2021 municipal road aid.
Make the motion that we approve that resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, second, any further discussion? There was a paper seen by the House. Post same. Motion passes. Approve the new employment application.
Make the motion that we approve the new employment application.
Second. We have a motion, second, any further discussion?
On the very back of it, actually had a note for A.D. that was on his desk. At the, on the affidavit, the very last page, I actually took this from KLC, but I'm wondering if this is not a typo. The part under the affidavit where it's actually enrolled, right after it says city is of an ad lill nature, the very next thing, which means that either the employee, should I also say either the employer or the employee? Do you see where I'm talking?
Which means that either the employee, it should say, or employer, may terminate the employment relationship at any time.
I think you're right.
Yeah, it should say or employer.
Because we're at will.
You're gonna hurt rushes you didn't turn the heat on.
Just my hands.
Should say employer.
Oh.
So, employer.
So, with that change?
It's not either. It's not either?
Yeah, it should be, which means that the employer, so either the comes out, that employer may turn action one.
Any other questions, comments? There was a paper seen by the House. Post same. Motion passes. And approve the F.G., AFG submission for the firefighter grant.
Yeah, every time, every time, this time every year, they come up to AFG Grant Assistant for our program, it's through FEMA. We want to ask for permission to apply for that grant. Our truck's getting quite a bit of age on, a lot of our interior, and I think our newest truck is actually no form of it. So, we're wanting to try to apply for the grant to get the new truck. It's only a 5% match on the grant total. We're looking at roughly around $350,000 for a truck, is what a truck's gonna run. So, on that 5%, it would be about $17,000 if we were awarded the grant. They do these grants, and they, I've looked at, last year, they awarded, I think it was 15 or 20 different departments in the 300, 350 range, some of them all the way to $500,000. So, it's a common thing they do with the trucks, but that type of grant, it is a 5% match.
Still a pretty good return on the.
Really, I like that. I like the $500,000 too better.
I do, too.
Shoot for the moon and get with the pen.
Do we have to?
Yes.
If I make a motion, we approve the grant application.
Second.
Carry motion, second, any further discussion? There was a paper seen by the House. Post same. Motion passes.
I did talk to Jessica Howard from Brad. She said once we got approval, she'd work with us and help us out here.
She, anything else worked out on that? Sam's?
FEMA go, I'll be back with her from Monta, I can send a county, I'd say. She said once I got approval, let her know and we'll do the rest.
Okay, good deal. Next item is visitor comments, so we'll start with Mr. Bratcher.
The resolution for Mr. Road Aid, is that just kind of like an equal employer thing, just to get the money, it didn't have any specifics about? You've already been told what you're getting.
Well, we did, the definite amount is determined at the end. It gives us a ballpark. It's, I don't have mine with me.
It was $70,000, 627, 45. $70,000, 627.
That's what they anticipate. And then, they'll come up at the end of the year and see what the actual gas tax collective was, and go through their form and see what our actual numbers are.
That's fine.
And they're usually pretty close. Mr. Monk, John? Y'all got anything to bring for us?
Well, I was going to, but I think, I think it's in the process of, you know, I'm hearing that, you know, we're gonna have a bar in the city. Trying to make sure that there's gonna be a limited number of them. I'm hoping that there's some things being worked on to where we don't have one every 50 feet. You know, our, most of our truck was back in 91 when everything was written, so we're gonna have to look at some amendments on land changes. We need to look at some things about having bars at certain distances from schools, churches. That's kind of what I was here for tonight, but I didn't mean to, you know, get in on something here. I didn't know if that's been worked on or not. That's really what I've been really concerned about.
Okay, duly noted, and I think there's been some discussion.
Yeah, that's got it in place, I understand. I'm hoping that's what we're talking about here.
I think so.
Okay. Yeah, that's really.
John and Robbie both are members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I assumed everybody knew that, but just in case you didn't.
I mean, there's nothing to go by, you know, because there wasn't a lot of cost ever back in that time period. So, you know, we need to look at what we need to be able to go by.
And what we found, even since we have gone with, some of the state laws have changed.
Yeah, that's what I was.
So, we're gonna have to go back and, we're looking to revisit some of our ordinances.
Right, right. Well, see, you know, I mean, we can create our own city ordinances, can't we? As long as it's not discriminatory.
If it's in conflict with the state, yes, we can.
They have to be, they cannot, we cannot weaken the state law. We can be more strict.
Am I right in understanding that what has happened is, when we went wet back in, I believe, 16, somewhere down there, everything?
15.
Well, we, we did not have a law present that's saying that you could not stop a bar. We felt like there could be a bar stopped now.
State statute at the time said that you had to have a population of 8,000 people or more in order to have a quota by the drink, a drink by the quota license.
And that's changed?
That law changed, apparently, in 2018.
So, but we on top of it, you know, that's my big concern. We're on top of that right now, that we won't have a ton of these things around. Now, there is one question I can't get an answer to. What about attire? What about dress in these bars? What are these, what's the rules on what they can serve?
You're talking about pornographic.
I know, I know.
And the county pornographic rules were wrote way before the 1991 rules.
So, we don't have to worry.
They're, no, they're, they're very, very lax.
Oh, they're lax?
Yes.
So, you're saying, I mean, what I'm asking is, is can we have a topless waitress come to us?
I don't know about nudity, but I do know that you can.
Tassels?
You can rent rooms in Beverden. According to the pornographic law that I read from the county, we had a problem when there was some written pornography up here at Family Video.
Right.
And I had to go get the rules to see what the rules were. You can rent rooms by the hour. You can have pole dancing in Ohio County, which I was real surprised at. I'll be honest with you. I was very surprised some, but it wasn't specified, that's what it was used for. It just said, there's no law against it for this. So, there's not many updates for the rules, and that's the county rules. That's not the city rules. That's the county rules.
So, we gotta work on that.
Yeah, it, everything's been outdated. I mean, there's a law in the cities of Hartford where it's $25 fiber spitting on the sidewalk. That was written in 1890s.
Yeah.
But, you know, they haven't been changed for so long, and that's what we're into. We've got so many laws that have been outdated because they've changed laws down the road. Like you said, we did the, when we did the wet/dry vote, you could not have a bar in the city of Beverden because of certain restrictions, 8,000 people. And then, in 2018, and I don't know if any of us knew that was possible, that they changed the law in 2018, and now you can have a bar. So, and I, again, is there a limit on the bars you can have in the city? Because wasn't there a limit on how many?
Used to be. There was a.
Limit on how many, there was only B2 liquor stores.
It was based on population.
Yes.
But Beverden's population, as far as packaged liquor, only allows technically one, but because it's based on every 2,300 people. But the state will not just issue one, they'll issue a minimum of two because they don't want to create a monopoly.
That was the rules when we, when they went wet/dry. We could only have two liquor stores.
Yeah.
And I think they've changed that law, haven't they?
No. That one, they did not change. The packaged liquor lobby is very strong.
Do we have a right to say, to put an order that says, we don't want no more than two?
We can, but, but how do you enforce it? Yeah.
How do you, you know?
And again, because they're gonna fight us every two years because they're gonna use state statutes against us, John.
Got you. Now, let me ask you one more question that's very important. We have a staff of officers of six, I believe.
Five right now.
We're working for six.
Right.
Okay. You mean, you know, I mean, we know we've got one bar coming, pretty well know that, and can't say for sure we're gonna have two or three more unless y'all can work out something that's not, something that the state's already said you're gonna get sued. So, we're gonna.
I'm used to that.
Six officers. We're gonna need one.
That's why I asked if we were gonna hire two.
Good job.
Well, we have talked about this before, John. And again, we, it wasn't something that was just a whim. We did just call a sudden and say, hey, we might need seven officers. We actually talked about it, what, three years ago?
One time we did have seven.
Yeah, we did have seven at one time, didn't we?
I was the seventh officer.
Yeah. And then, we went down, we got, I think one time we got down to four, didn't we, at one point?
We're gonna see some changes. We're going to see some changes on this DUI thing, if we got an officer that can sit around there and take care of it.
My big concern is not, is not how many, my big concern is where they're at. I don't, I don't, I don't like some of the locations that people have talked about putting in. Well, and again, it's not, look, people got the right, the law is the law. I'm not going to sit here, this man over here tells me all these laws that we have to go by, and sometimes I don't always agree with them, but they're the law, you have to go by them because they're the law. My problem is where they're putting it. You know, I was surprised they put a liquor store on the street that go, on most of the street that goes up to the grade school. That, that kind of, I was kind of surprised they allowed that. But, apparently, it met all the criteria, so they did it. Again, I don't think it's affected anybody, I don't think it's hurt anybody, but, you know, there's a vacant lot across from the Beverdame Grade School that Mrs. Byers used to own that's for sale. You know, what if somebody bought that place and put a bar in there? It's in the city limits. You know, right there in between Bebel Brothers and that little house down there.
Yeah, right across from the school.
Right across from the school. What if they put it in there? And I'm not saying they would, I'm not saying they will, I'm just saying that would bother them. You know, and that's the thing about this, that I think you're concerned with, I think we as a commission are concerned with it too.
Well, we need you all on this. I mean, we got, we already got, unless it's just talking, I don't think it is, I don't know how far our trust, Beverdame Baptist, comes down to where this is going to be, but we got a preschool up there, I took three grandbabies up there, going to take another one, you know, and that hurts. We may not stop this one, we might, you all can, I don't believe, I'm not hearing it, you know, and I believe you'd tell me, and I know you would if you could, but, we can stop the next one. And that's what I'm here for. And I appreciate you all, because I know if you could do it, you all got grandbabies and children, I know that. And that's, I appreciate you giving me the time to talk about that, a real difference.
Appreciate it, John, very much, thank you. Right?
We need to add some people to the code enforcement board. We're down to four. We also need somebody for you, an attorney.
I've got to call into one today. David and I talked about this in my days, Thursday, Friday.
But the way we are right now, if we lose one, we do not have four.
So you need one or you need two members?
We actually need three, we need extra. The way the commission was set up, or the board was set up, was a member, five members and two officers.
Okay. Do you have any suggestions, and you'd like to give them to me right now, just get with me later? We may have a couple, so. Okay. Dave, anything else? Chris?
Just real quick, you guys seen the caution tape in the back, Kentucky Lake City's supplied this for us, we got it on the 29th of January, it's a responsive, it's a responsive resistance simulator, the company's TI, they're out of Golden, Colorado. I go once every year for 16 hours of training, it's, it's a state of the art system, it's interactive, I can control based on the officer's responses to some of the scenarios that are played out, I can change the outcome of the scenarios, and it incorporates about every tool that we use on our duty belt. There's tasers back there, it's all, all the weapons are and tools are modified, actual tools. The handguns back there are modified Glock 27s, or 22s, they're modified with a laser. The Lake City's asked that I talk to you guys about it and invite you to come and go through some of the scenarios so you can see a little bit of what we do. Unfortunately, they're coming to get it tomorrow night, so. If you want to stay after the meeting, I'll be glad to stay, and next year, I'll try to get something out to you guys ahead of time, so maybe, because they really want.
Can we shoot Larry or Kevin with a taser?
I was going to give my grandson, I like you to like tasering him.
It'll, it'll just, he won't know what's going on, he's going to shoot that screen back.
Thank you, appreciate it. Mike? Okay, I'm not even going to go to you two, because I know what you're needing, we're going to need to do some close session in just a minute. Sandy, do you have anything?
I'm in good shape.
Surprisingly good shape.
We have a matter of bombing in another city to talk about.
Okay, well, we got, hang on just a second, do you have anything?
I've got one thing before close session.
Because we got a close session for litigation and a contract.
I'll give you an update on 2019 water loss for the water system and the sewer system. 2019, we purchased 91,958,000 gallons in the county. We produced 28,713,000 gallons from our wells. The total, 120,671,800 gallons. We sold 117,632,000 to the customers, which is a difference of 3 million gallons. So our water loss for 2019 is a staggering 2.5%. KWWA, which is an association here in Kentucky, says a well-maintained water system runs at 15% loss or less. So we're running at a 2.5%.
A lot better.
On the wastewater side, we sent 331,000 gallons of sewage to the regional wastewater. Here again, we billed 117 million to our customers, which is a difference of 213 million, which is a 65% difference. So in essence, for every three gallons we're sending to the regional sewer, we're being paid for one.
That's a whole lot of INI, probably.
If you remember during the concert season, it was rain, 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 rain. That's, that's where the rain kills us. You know, that's how our rates are set, you know, they do a five-year study on our, our maintenance and operation, and that's why our rates are set. The water loss does not include any water that we use on the fire department for fire runs, any for the sewer cleaning of the sewer machines, or our water main brakes. So, you know, that number could possibly come, could come down sun, not a tremendous amount, but I think, I think our water system is actually very, very tight. So, kind of 2019 review.
Now, our sewer system, last time they checked the lines, aren't we at about 95% on the INI in our lines?
When it was checked, yes, that was a couple years ago, though.
Has it been that long? No, it's been, I've been here.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's been since then, because I was here when we did.
It's been 110 years, since, since we had the smoke testing, the flow monitoring.
That's what Intutusi Forum was here? That's how long before Intutusi Forum could hear and did all that flip lining?
Yes.
Wow, I didn't think that long ago.
I didn't either.
How long have we been here?
Ten.
We need to check that again, that's a lot of loss.
Well, Joe Henry sent some information on going, going back to the same process of the, of the flow monitoring, you know, we have certain areas in town, we know that we're going to get horror, and that's going to be on the 2020, 21 budget.
Good.
Anything else?
That's all I have until after close session.
Okay, so we need a motion to go into close session for contract negotiation and litigate, possible litigation.
I'd love to go back and open session.
Second.
Turn the heat on.
It's on. I think it looks good.
Hold on, a lot on a fire.
Okay, Larry?
Backing up session?
Yes.
Yes.
We're looking to upgrad the pieces of equipment that's here. We, I've got three prices here with a trade in. All three pieces, all three machines are actually on state contract bid. We have a Case, John Deere, and a Caterpillar. The Case come in at the highest with trade-in is going to be $53,505. Since they are at the highest, and one concern with them that I have is, they're actually the furthest away on for a service call, so.
Case, Evanston?
Yes. The, the other two, Caterpillar and a Bowling Green, and John Deere out of Owensboro, $10,000 of each other. I would, I would ask, would the commission let me take the operator over? We know what the Caterpillar is. There's actually a gentleman here in town that has a John Deere, the same thing we're looking at, maybe take him over to run it, see if he's just comfortable with it before we make a decision.
That could be a wide move.
What's the one we've got now?
It is a Caterpillar. And the Caterpillar with trade-in come in at $50,580, the John Deere come in at $49,572.
I would just say Caterpillar's out there.
Their closest is the Bowling Green. We like Caterpillar, we had good luck at a Caterpillar, parts are a whole lot higher, a whole lot higher. It was really nice when they had a service department in Owensboro that was closed down. John Deere has one in Owensboro, which is a big plus.
And it used to be a pretty good one, I assume it still is.
They built a brand new one, brand new shop.
Oh, yeah, over on that.
Operate on 60.
Now, Bowling Green has the closest Caterpillar shop, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Right now, money-wise, $1,000 cheaper, I'm leaning towards a John Deere.
Well, you're an operator, you need to make that decision. I think it'd be wise for you all to go look at them and whichever one you all like, I think we would back, so, because you all have to use it.
I need that in the form of a motion.
I'll make that motion.
In a second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Those are papers seen by the, post sign, motion passes. Okay, do you want to have anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn.